Okay, it's six thirty on Tuesday, January tenth, twenty twenty-three. Call the order, the council meeting. Roll call, please.
William Clevenger.
Present.
Bill Giffens.
Here.
Bill Ham.
Here.
Sally Richardi.
Here.
Rich West.
Present.
All stand to the place.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and the Republic which stands one nation under God, universal, creative, and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda is reorganization of the council. Motion?
I'd like to nominate Bill Giffens for president.
Is there a second? Well, I'll go ahead and second Bill's nomination. Is there any discussion? I have. I would like to continue as the Culver Town Council President for the following reasons. I've lived in own property in this community since nineteen eighty-two. During that time, I put my youngest son through the academy. I've lived here permanently since two thousand nine. Since then, I've served the community as finance chair of the Culver Union Township Advisory Board, member of the Marshall County Council, vice president and president of the Culver Town Council, president of the Union Township Library Board, treasurer of the Culver Boys and Girls Club of Culver and the Culver Youth Club, and treasurer and member of the Guiding Council of the Wesley United Methodist Church, and now the Heart Choir Church. Before that, over a twenty-year banking career. And before that, over a twenty-year banking career, I was president of four very successful banks. The last one being on the FDIC bid list of failed banks. I try my best every day to do the jobs I've been blessed to have done right. Do I make mistakes? Sometimes, yes. But the majority of tasks I undertake, I get things right. We have many challenges ahead of us over the next several years, and based on my past leadership and successes, I desire to continue as your town council president. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to committee to retain as town council president. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Nay.
Mr. Giffens.
Yay, yes.
Mr. Ham.
Aye.
Ms. Richardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Nay.
motions three-two. Are there any other motions for president?
I think a motion to nominate Bill Clevenger as president of the Culver Town Council.
Motion to nominate the same to nominate Bill Clevenger as president of Culver Town Council. Is there any discussion? There are none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Giffens.
Nay.
Mr. Ham.
Present.
Ms. Richardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Motion carried three-two. Bill, congratulations. Why don't I just pass this to you today and we'll change seats next time? Okay, thank you, Bill.
Thank you for your service.
At the hall. I got it. Thank you, Bill. Good time. Next item on the agenda is the approval of December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Oh, I'm sorry. Nomination vice president. I nominate Rich West.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Now roll call, please.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Giffens.
Aye.
Mr. Ham.
Aye.
Ms. Richardi.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations, Rich. Good call. And now we move on to approval of the December twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting minutes. Everyone had a chance to look at the minutes or review.
Yep. Yes. I think the motion that we approve these council minutes from December twenty-seventh. Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
Right. Yes, I've got a couple items here. There you go. Oh, under blue zones. When Jenny talked about blue zones and asked that her resignation would be accepted by the council, you all will recall, Jenny Cerise said, "That was not necessary that the council do that because the resignation letter had already been submitted and really couldn't ask someone to come back once they turned in their resignation." That's one change that needs to be made. Another change that I think needs to be made in there is when we were talking about blue zones that Rich brought up, Mr. West brought up, Mr. Clevenger stated that he had received a ton of phone calls regarding blue zones. And I just find that kind of interesting since we don't have two thousand town residents here in Culver. Third thing that I think needs to be in the minutes, in the issue of transparency, is Rich made a motion, and it was seconded, I believe, by, yeah, by Ms. Richardi, that we search out Mr. Ripley with HR Unlimited Resources and get a proposal. I said that I would contact Mr. Ripley and get a proposal in, and that proposal is on our agenda today. That's all I have.
I made the motion to approve the minutes. I would accept the first and the third modification to those minutes. It's acceptable.
There's been a motion to approve the additions and corrections to the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Richardi. Any further discussion?
May I have those in writing?
I'm sorry?
Could you give me those highlighted in writing so that I get that correct?
Sure.
Thank you.
We have to. Okay. All in favor of the addition corrections to the minutes of the December twenty-seventh meeting?
Aye.
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 Pass five-oh. Next on the agenda is board commission appointments.
Okay, I made a comment on the agenda. I had the version I fronted out. I forgot that you all had passed the contract at the last meeting, so it didn't need to be on the agenda.
Oh, we're...
As a disappointment.
Okay. Right. Okay, board and commission appointments.
I suggest that even with the applications we receive, there are some openings, potential openings on some of the boards and commissions. There are also some people who applied that if we, I'm not familiar with, and I don't know their council members are. I would guess, at least for discussion, if not, that we lay those appointments, interview the candidates that we're not familiar with or have not been on the board of commissions before, and reopen the application process until our next meeting.
Any discussion among the council? I'll second that. That's a motion.
Yeah, I will. I thought you wanted to talk about the other suggestions.
I'd agree.
Just a matter of protocol, is the president appoints these people, right?
Some of them.
Or just... Oh, council. Oh, so part, part.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Got it. Make sure Kevin, Karen, I think, is very, very helpful.
Definitely.
Yeah.
What candidates are and who's on first.
Yeah, I saw, I just forgot.
My only question is, is commissions that are meeting prior to the next, our next board meeting.
Yeah, you were able to reappoint the ones who asked to be reappointed for plan commission and BZA. I don't know that you had any new ones for those because they do have cases on the January docket, and it's better to have an assurance of quorum. One, I believe, is Henry Melchon for BZA, Barry McManaway for Plan Commission.
I didn't ask. I thought Joe might be able to answer this. I thought of our practice that until a replacement was appointed, I know...
They can stay?
Your...
That's the law.
Oh, good. Okay.
Until replaced from his acquired or expired. I don't know.
That's the law. You keep, you keep held the position until you're...
Okay, so we're Culvers without meeting. Okay.
We're kind of bits.
Rich, you want to put that in a formal motion?
Sure. I would move that we reopen the application process for the boards and commissions and that the president, if there are members of the council who would like to be involved in the interview process or those board members, they contact the president who will then make arrangements to interview board members, board applicants, and we defer the appointments and open the application process until our next meeting.
I'll second. Moved by, seconded by Bill Giffens, that we delay the appointments until the next meeting, which would be January twenty-fourth. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ayes have it. Thank you.
And Mr. President, if I may, I agree that you can do that, but I would not delay it further from the twenty-fourth because you've got some important business to take care, and you need to have the people in place, so.
All right.
So, may I ask, you want me to put out the applications or reopen, when, what date would you like those applications to be submitted?
The Friday before the twenty-seventh.
Is that going to give you enough time to interview?
No, I'm sorry. You know, we need to interview the Monday before the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-fourth. Seventeenth, so a week from today.
Twenty-third. A week from the day.
Oh.
Sixteenth.
Well, that worked for you, Karen.
So by the sixteenth?
By the sixteenth.
Sixteenth is a Monday.
Yeah. Well, that worked for you. Do you think that's enough time?
It's... I just wanted to know when you wanted, what timeline you wanted before we start assuming things.
And are you going to have an interview as a group or individually? If you're going to do it as a group, you have to it calls regular meeting or executive session or something.
They suggested in the motion that if there were council members interested in the interview process, they contact the president to set up the appointments and know that you can't do it in the quorum. Looks... But...
I'm just saying, if you're all going to be there, you got to give notice.
Let's just put it this way. If everyone's going to be there, you need to know by Thursday, by Tuesday, when you want to do it, because you'll probably want to do interviews Thursday. You want to know by the seventeenth because I'll have to advertise that seventeenth, so you can have meetings on the evening of the of Thursday, which would be the eighteenth, or Friday, the nineteenth.
Eight forty-eight hours.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying Tuesday night, Thursday night interviews or Friday.
Meeting on the eighteenth, which is the Thursday night.
But you have BZA that night, so. You would have to do the mouthwork. We have cases for that Thursday here.
Would...
There'll be a late night here.
We could do it at different locations.
Yeah, that's true.
BZA is six-thirty or five?
Six-thirty, and the last few have gone very late. We have pretty full agendas for both BZA and...
No, we can do it at five o'clock, which would eliminate the conflict with BZA.
It would.
Yeah.
Once you see what comes in, I can help you schedule it if you want.
Yeah.
Do you need that in a formal motion?
I just need to know. I just wanted to know what your time is so that I can publish that out.
Five o'clock on the eighteen.
Is that your meeting then? Right at this point, you just want your deadline, your application deadline to be Monday, January sixteenth at four P M. And we'll go from there.
All right. First of all, since being elected president of the council for this year, I'm going to withdraw my request for reappointment to the Culver Development Commission for the year two thousand twenty-three. I've sat around with... Okay. Next item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh-oh-one.
Yes, the Plan Commission approved these rezonings that you have on your docket tonight, and there's a letter of recommendation from the Plan Commission. Jim has reviewed these, and they're prepared for you. This first one was an application from the Bonine Properties Trust Agreement, and that particular property is a triplex house that was zoned R-one, and the Plan Commission is recommending to rezone it in R-two. I think I probably copied all of you on the letters that came in on the various different rezonings we had that evening. This one did receive a group letter, and there were, there was public comment. So, tonight, on all three of these, I'd just like to have you pass on first read and then do second, third read at another meeting if you're so inclined to rezone these properties. And the reason for that one is it's been for several decades operating as a triplex, and the property owners want to be able to sell it how it's being operated today and how it has been the last several decades. Apparently, I think, since seventies maybe. So, that's why the R-two, which allows for a multifamily home to exist, whereas R-one does not.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to rezone one fourteen Lake Shore Drive from residential R-one to residential...
Second.
A first on first reading?
On the first read.
On the first read. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Pass five-oh. Next is ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh-oh-two.
Yes, this one is for eight-ten South Main Street, which is a duplex, and this one is also being used as a duplex, but it's zoned R-one, and the request is to rezone to R-two.
I'll make the motion that we rezone eight-ten South Main Street from R-one to R-two.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Richardi and seconded by Bill Ham to pass ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh-oh-two on first read. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five-oh. Next is ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh-oh-three.
Yes, and I should have mentioned that last one did not receive public input comments, and neither did this one. This one is two-seventeen South Ohio Street, and it's the exact same type of rezoning from R-one to R-two.
Make motion that we rezone two-seventeen South Ohio Street on first read from R-one to R-two.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Richardi, seconded by Bill Ham, but we pass ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh-oh-three on first read. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the town manager search. Bill, since you initiated that, do you want to... Well, thank you, Rich, really initiated it. I just said I'd be the gofer to go, thought to mention, see if he would again assist us, and I think it's down note, Mitch assisted us in finding Jonathan Leist, and then after Jonathan left, assisted us in finding a replacement for Jonathan. I'm going to get some of my number wrong probably, but I think Mitch said he had like five or six, six or seven applicants, of which he felt like, I think, three, he felt qualified, could do a good job, and, you know, was ready to bring, you know, someone like that in front of us. And at that point in time, you know, I talked to Mitch and said we thought we might have somebody here that would do it, and mentioned Jenny's name, and long story short, he talked to Jenny and they worked out an arrangement, and that's how we got Jenny. So, now, since we're doing the search again, I asked Mitch to prepare a proposal, and I don't know, but I believe this is fairly similar to the last one that he did. You know, in, what, two and a half, three years, thereabouts later, he came back and, you know, there is a schedule in here of what he will do and how long it will take him to do it, hiring the town manager process, meet with the council, work schedule, his charges for mileage and items like that. But the most important, let's say the most important, the trux of it is that says this letter constitutes an agreement between the town of Culver, Indiana and HR Resources, Unlimited Resources, Mitch Ripley of HR Unlimited Resources, agrees to assist in directing the hiring of a town manager for the town of Culver in return for his service. The town of Culver, Indiana agrees to pay HR Resources one thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars for the entire process. HR Unlimited Resources will build a town of Culver at the completion of the project. I asked Mitch last week to get this to me. He got it to me, I believe, it was Thursday afternoon. I gave it to Karen yesterday. Mitch said he could not be here tonight. He would have been, but he's on vacation. So, that's the proposal, I believe. Karen sent it electronically to all the council members.
Basically, on the fact that we have a successful history with Mitch in terms of recruitment, and I think that's a pretty reasonable cost for him being and very selective and working with us on developing a job description, I would believe that we authorize the president of the council to sign the proposal on our behalf and accept it.
Second.
It's been moved by Rich West and seconded by Bill Ham that we accept the consulting proposal from Mitch Ripley in the amount of one thousand one thousand three hundred ninety-seven dollars. Any discussion before we vote on part of the council?
Did an excellent job the last couple of times.
The price is very, very reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, it's amazing what he, what he got done in his timeframe, everything what he got to do.
And probably forty percent of that is transportation.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Considerably.
Okay, hearing a motion in a second. And we've had discussion. All those in favor of retaining Mitch Ripley for the consulting proposals for the new town manager of Culver, Indiana. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed with the same sign. Motion passes five-oh. Mr. President, if you want, I will contact the Rich and give him your contact information to give me a buzz.
Thank you.
And go from there. All right, thank you. Okay, town manager.
All right. Um, first thing, under building commissioner, I had distributed to all of you a job description, and this was after our discussions with Ty Adley and Karen and I talked to the county a couple of different times. As we thought about this and thought about some of the challenges we have in the office, we'd really like to make this a community planning manager slash building commissioner position and seek some skill sets that would include someone with experience in planning, but also strong project management, interpersonal skills, communication skills. So, the way that I had rewritten this and submitted it to you was based on a skill set, although it does have very specific duties that also outline the building commissioner duties as well as planning duties. We also put in a minimum of twenty hours a week. Obviously, if we got past the federal limit on hours, we'd have to come back and ask you to make it full-time, but right now it wouldn't be a full-time position with potential to be more than twenty hours. But under that full-time position threshold, we also included that this position would likely do some cross training, that we were looking for someone motivated who might want to expand in that role versus this just being a building commissioner role. So, that's what we've outlined. We'd like to advertise it that way if you're good with us submitting this versus a building commissioner submission.
Council, any comments?
I like the idea. I think the creative approach to this. If we're going to create a position, have it more than just being old and being the building commissioner. And since there's obviously a need for more work or more hands to do work because it seems to be busy time, I think it's a good idea.
I just think that it's going to be challenging to find the skill sets to match because one's kind of technical and others kind of strategic.
Yeah.
So, it'll be a challenge. I think it's a great idea.
We definitely need somebody who has a skill set to do all the building commissioner stuff. And, you know, it's familiar with computers and able to do that because that was one of the major problems.
Jenny, how do you propose to fund this?
Right now, we already have funding for a building commissioner, and it would still stay as an hourly position.
Okay.
We just want someone who's dynamic enough to possibly work on other things, whether it's, you know, communications website. We have massive projects that are coming up, like broadband implementation. Somebody who could be useful because their skill set is capable of being flexible enough to handle it. That position also has to have pretty strong interpersonal skills because you're taking inquiries from a lot of residents, meeting people on site sometimes, facilitating TRC meetings, preparing... meeting people on site sometimes, facilitating TRC meetings, preparing the BCA, preparing the plan commission. So we, we want someone who can multitask and have the various skills that are needed to do that effectively, and if they can do that effectively, I think they can do other things as well within the office environment.
Will they be doing any of the clerks work?
Potentially. All that front office work kind of overlaps between the two offices, so it could be a task oriented job on one day, it could be handling people at the window on a given day.
That's a lot of the public, I mean, the publications that are involved in planning. A, that being to do that for other things like the notices to the town council meetings or banking sessions, I mean, it might.
And there's definitely a lot of overlap.
Well, and as events that they're doing that, should, should some of the remuneration come out of the court budget?
It's already out of the court budget.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Karen, okay. Thank you. That's the only question I have. Any further discussion? Jenny, are you looking for a motion?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the job description for the community planning manager slash building commissioner? Our time for twenty to twenty-eight hours per week, is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Ham, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Gooden seconds. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed same time, pass five zero, thank you.
Great, thanks. All right. Under utility street department, the surf contract is going out to surf. Bill Ham has had a chance to review, I think Jim, you probably got your eyes on it at this point. So I will find out if they have any changes and we will be good to go. There's no change on the Lake Max Trail phase. This is not an N dot project, but the Slate and Jefferson Trail is a regional stellar project, so both of those are going on simultaneously, and there's been no change on the status of that. Same thing with the water project proposal for Midwestern. Saw moved down and peerless proposal for cleaning the well and rebuilding the pump. That has been defeated. That pump was pulled out, we did the work on that. Parts replaced, et cetera, it is now back online. So no more of that orange colored water. Well, testing, you guys may have noticed down at our property on the south end of town, that testing has started to take place, so we will let you know what they discover on that testing. From what I could tell, Bob thought it went well.
They grilled them.
Fun on words there, but yes, yeah. Quite, quite adept, apparently.
Okay.
So PS engineering proposal, that's the community crossing grant that we received, and you've authorized Bob to be our N dot certified authority on that. We are drafting a letter for the neighbors along that stretch to inform them about that project. I will run that by Bob, Karen, and all of you before we send that out, just to make sure you're good with it. And again, that grant was community crossings in the amount of three hundred twenty thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. The park crossroads stellar project, that one is obviously under construction still and will be for a while. So there's no change on that. Under town manager updates, you've already done the rezoning ordinances. The M C E D C contract, Greg is running that by his board. I think that they also have reorganization this time of year and appointments, so that may be a month or so before we hear back from them. The comprehensive plan, the current status is we're still working with Crossroads Culver team on this plan. This Thursday, I'm meeting with Zach Driggs and Donnie Ritzma from MACOG to talk about how to finish and complete this. We're going to talk about different options for that, as you guys recall, we signed a contract with them. I was going to write some of the narrative on this plan, so we need to work out how, we're on a short timeline, and the plan was not to get this done until later this spring or early summer. So I will let you know what, what they come up with there after our Thursday meeting. Merchants Association meeting, Amber conducted that one on Monday morning, so we will get an update on that to you. And that group is meeting once a month. They have been great about discussing downtown issues with us, so for example, the Winter Fest coming up on the special event permits. They, they have changed some of how they're going to do Winter Fest by moving it some, some of it to downtown. So I think having this particular group meet on a regular basis is going to benefit the businesses as well as us and how we organize some of these events. Special event permits, the first one that I summarized.
You said she invited sixty people and we had six attend.
Yeah, that was for MACOG comp planning session.
Oh, okay.
Business development.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So anytime we've got a group of stakeholders at the table, we're trying to hit with that comprehensive plan on those seven key topic areas. The Winter Fest is scheduled for February tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. As noted, part of this would take place on Main Street. They would like to barricade part of Main Street on Saturday from Jefferson Street to Madison Street. Basically, that downtown district business area. They are planning to move what, you know, they used to have the ice wars or ice fights in the park with the beer garden. The plan is to move it to downtown and have the stores open so that people will shop while they're enjoying that. So, and in addition to approving the event, which partially takes place in the park, you would be approving, putting the barricades up for that Saturday event as part of Winter Fest. All the department heads have reviewed the application, Andrea Canacci has been involved in planning this event. There was a letter sent out to the businesses along there that are clearly affected by having it. So they've done all of the requirements of our, our permit process.
Wayne is proven.
Yes.
Okay. Looking for a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the special event permit for Winter Fest, February tenth, one, twelve.
I'll second. It's been moved by Mr. Roucherty and seconded by Rich West to approve the special event permit for Winter Fest for February tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed same time. Event.
Okay, thank you. The next event is not until July fifteenth. This is a five K and children's half mile run that Dana Neer has organized. They don't expect road closures, but they do want to have some music before and after the event, more amphitheater. They also want to have police direct traffic. Wayne has reviewed this one as well as the other department heads. They will have people with CPR, first aid training on hand for it. So the motion, motion to approve is what we've meant.
Most approved, five K children's half mile run. It's been moved by Rich West, is there a second?
Second.
The second is by Bill Ham. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed same time.
Okay. The last one is also one that Dana Neer submitted for September sixteenth. This is a similar event, but it's a ten mile run and a five K. Not anticipating road closures, but would like a police presence for traffic. And they do, I believe this is the one they gather around the lake house area, and they do have music for that one as well.
A motion to approve the ten mile run and the five K for September sixteenth.
Still moved.
It's been moved by Bill Ham, is there a second? Seconded by Rich West, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed same time, ten mile one and five K approved, thank you.
Okay, thanks. The next thing on my report is the Ready Grant Dunes Project. Phil Fasenda, Sally Roucherty, Jim Clevenger, Hi Yanba, and Kyle, her associate from Baker Tilly. Phil Fasenda is obviously from Barnes and Thornburg, he's the attorney that we use for the CRC and establishing TIF areas and modifying them. We met earlier today, because tomorrow we will have a meeting with us as well as the developer, and we have been working on what the schedule would look like for establishing a TIF, what kind of financing options there would be for the CRC, and what the town would like to see come out of that. We're still working on what our preference would be to be able to come back and recommend that for council and CRC. But those meetings are taking place, and we will have the next one tomorrow.
Yeah, we still need to obtain a lot of information so we can, we can be in a better position to, you know, give you guys and give the CRC some opinions as to how this should proceed. Baker Tilly needs more information so that they can get a better handle on, you know, what, what this is going to look like and, and all those kinds of things. Phil, from a legal standpoint, so and unfortunately, we've got to put a lot of this together enough to at least get a preliminary budget to the Ready Grant people, so it's moving along, and once I think we get more information, we'll be able to better make some assess analysis and give everybody some, at least recommendations on direction.
So we, like I said, will have another meeting tomorrow. And then the last thing on the agenda is annexation of Tamarack Road, as you know, they have petitions to be annexed, your public hearing date is set for your next council meeting. I have started the fiscal management plan and gotten to the point of budget information, so I'm hoping to pass that on to Jim well before your public hearings, so that he can push it back to me and tell me whatever I've done wrong. And that is it.
Thank you, Jim. Department has reports. Jeff, are you online?
I think Jeff is here tonight, last I talked to him.
Sorry?
I just have one thing, I got the run record for twenty twenty-two. I'm glad to say, was down from twenty twenty-one, seventeen dollars, we ended up having a total of ninety-three runs. I'll have those all sent to your emails at separate times, so you can see the report, that's it.
Thank you, Jerry. Wayne, are you online?
Yes, I am. Hello?
Go ahead.
I don't have anything.
Thank you, Wayne.
You're welcome.
Amber in the room, or is she online?
She's online.
Pardon?
She's online.
I'm online.
Okay, Amber, go ahead.
I just started today putting out all the information for our summer employees for the Parks Department, so that recruitment process has begun. Preparations for summer are beginning. Other than that, we have our upcoming Culver Park Snow Day on the twenty-first, which is open up to the public. And then our free community yoga class will be on the twenty-eighth, and then obviously, we'll be playing a large role in Winter Fest. So that's all the updates for me.
Thank you, Amber. Bob, are you on?
I'm on, I have nothing for you, unless you have any questions for me.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the clerk's report.
I just have two claims for your approval, one is for Wildland House, the seven hundred and three seat for nine thousand four hundred eighty dollars, and that's the fourth order attorney bill. And then the other one is for Stryker Sales Corporation for twenty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight. And that is for the AED that was purchased, your financing for the EMS department.
They moved that we approve those claims over twenty-five hundred dollars.
Second. The move by Rich West and seconded by, to approve the claims over twenty-five hundred dollars, any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed same time. Approved.
Hey, it is that time of year for conflict of interest statements, and I circulated a copy for all of you to fill out if you do have any sort of conflict of interest. It's better to, or even if it's really not, but it could be, go ahead and fill out the conflict of interest statement and submit it to me, it's better to do it than not. It does need to be submitted to state board of accounts, and I would upload that, and then it also needs to be filed with the clerk's office in Marshall County. I have my own personal one, just to let you know, I do billing for the East Shore Conservancy District, plus like Mexico City Conservancy District. And it's, so, I mean, I don't have any dealings as far as negotiating fees or anything, but just to put that out there, that's aside jobs applied, basically pays for my daughter's college tuition, so.
When do you need these in, but?
You know, it's, there's not a necessarily deadline date, but typically at the, at the beginning of the year is kind of that significantly.
You don't have to have it on thirty-one.
No, no, it, it's just something that you can.
On a annual basis.
Unless something comes up and there's a specific contract we need to do it. So just to make you all aware that that's, that it is reflected in a minute. The final thing I have is banking, we currently bank with TCU, and our contract is up. I did check the local interest rates. And they didn't come close to what TCU is offering us, and so I would just have four, and let them to certain things.
What is TCU's rate?
It is over four point five percent.
And this is a, is it a floating rate or a fixed rate?
I, unless somebody feels, otherwise, I would say a fixed rate.
And it's a two-year contract, isn't that correct?
Yes.
And you're saying?
Although I did float out the possibility of doing a one-year contract, and then with next year being a this year being an election year. And after that, it could be a four-year contract, because
Four-year?
Yes, we might be able to get a better interest rate that way, I, I don't know, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, I didn't know they were gonna.
Because when they were in, they asked if it was possible to do a longer contract, and I said, not really. But that might, I haven't gotten response on that one, so.
Question on part of council. I would say with the rates, way rates are going, I mean, four and a half is, is great. I mean, it's a roll of the dice. You know, we get, if you're looking at maybe just a one-year, we're fixed, and then look at it, then go longer, that, that is an option, or, you know, do it, do it, do it floating this year, and then, I mean, it's six, one half done the other, was council's ideas.
We don't need to have it, anything more in depth than her checking the interest rates, correct?
Right. Well, I mean.
There's a contract in place now.
Correct.
That's right.
I'd have to check, I think there's a limit as to three years on those.
That may be, and I, it was just like a, you know, one of those things that I asked the question.
Yeah.
I think motion to accept that for a two, for another two-year contract.
It's been motion by Mr. Roucherty to accept a two-year contract from Teachers Credit Union. Is there a second?
That's been, I'm council seems to indicate extending it initial two years. The initial three-year contract is that.
Well, I'd have to, I'd have to check. I don't think there's a problem if you extend it one year. I'm not sure about two. Or you might be able to.
We've been operating under a two-year contract.
Have you been two years?
Yes, yeah, we're, yeah, that's
So I think you've been operating.
Contract length.
Yeah, you've been operating. The I think the concern is why I said three is is that I think the statute contemplates that you don't lock yourself in that you're not able to change banks at some point if interest rates are more favorable somewhere else.
I mean, I'll withdraw that if some if there's more interest.
Well, two might very well be fine. I
Want to postpone this until the next meeting? Can we do that?
That's your program.
I mean, you
When's your time, when's your contract expire?
Well, it's all just what we think interest rates are going to do. Do you think they're going to continue to rise? Or do you think? And you're never going to hit the top and you're never going to hit the bottom. We all know, Bill, you and I know that as a banker. So I mean, four and a half lot better than we're doing right now.
Yeah.
So as you, you know, bird in the hand, work two in the bush. I mean, whatever, what? Somebody wants to second her motion, that's fine. She just went through the line. Well, she said she would.
I'll, I guess my discussion would be, do you want to do it for one year and see what the interest rates do? And then you know, or you can walk it into case.
You know what?
You don't want to keep going back. You don't want to keep going back.
Just wait until next meeting and we'll move on.
Wait, wait until next meeting and then we'll go.
Make it.
Yeah. Attorney's report.
Well, we covered most of my attorney's report. The I just want to follow up, I guess, on the annexation. It's as Jenny said, the annexation of the eighteen seven one oh Tamarack Road. About four and a half acres there that kind of at the south end of Main Street's going to be before you on a public hearing on the twenty-fourth. The proposed use is for an executive storage for RVs, boats and miscellaneous personal property. The zoning is going to remain the same C two. And as Jenny indicated, we'll hopefully have a fiscal plan that's in pretty good shape for your consideration. Just to kind of where I wanted to follow up was is if you decide to go ahead and approve the petition for annexation, you need to adopt an annexation ordinance. Includes a legal description, fiscal plan and then the adoption of the ordinance needs to be recorded, published before it becomes effective somewhere down the road and you know, when you're bringing things in, timing is kind of critical on all of this and so you may not make the deadline unless you hustle right along. So just so you know.
Do I need to draft the ordinance for the or do I draft it for the February meeting?
I think I'd rather, well, it's up to you. It's up to them. It's up to you. And then Jenny talked about the tip. We did that. And then also I don't know if you saw your email this afternoon. I forwarded Dick Newsbaum up an attorney in South Bend, entered his appearance on behalf of the grant folks. And shared with me a letter from Associate Counsel and I thought I kind of gave a pretty good summary of what Jeanette and I have been talking about and to some degree what Steve Snyder is also talking about. So I shared that with you as a privileged confidential communication and we'll we get her back in the office for maiden court for a couple of days. We'll we'll get try to get that wrapped up before the twenty-fourth. And then we already talked about the broadcast, so that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Jane. Anybody in the room or online for utility shot off or ordinance violation? Hearing none. Moving on to citizen input. I mean, and yes, Paul, identify yourself in the dress, please.
Paul, I think this is a little bit four two four force place. I have two requests. The first would be nice to witness the transition of the president and the process that it went through. Appreciate as a citizen that Mr. Giddens spoke about his background and why he felt was qualified. I would like your but your experience and professional background that you bring to this role because I kind of think I think we're in a very interesting time. I mean, the leadership role is important that we know what that person brings. Now, you know, you want to put this in writing or not, but I just want to hear about what you bring as president.
Thank you, Paul. Peru University, twenty-three years in investment management. Two terms elected as county coroner and far as government is concerned. Four years on the town council. One year, one two-year term. One, two, one, two, one-year terms on Culver redevelopment. I've been a resident of the Culver area since two thousand and two. I moved into the corporate limits of the town in two thousand and twelve. I continue to reside at two thirty-two South Main Street, you know. I think my background in working in investment management, particularly in the area of banking allows me to have a skill set as far as financial dealings are concerned. My experience in county government as county coroner has, I think, brought me a better understanding of how government works. And as I say, being a resident, I have a firm and solid belief that Culver is a great community and the best is yet to come. Anything else you might add, Paul?
No, that's one of the two requests I wanted to get in. The council obviously made a decision and I want to understand the background background behind that and and the choice. The second one is actually just a follow-up. Jenny, I know time is running down for your next adventure. And you and I have been communicating to be giving updates. Very interested in the full survey results from Culver twenty-four.
Yeah.
And I respect having transitioned out of jobs before I respect how time runs out and products run up. I mean, gladly, if if you find it's easier to give me all that information, I'd gladly go through it myself.
I may be asking for help. I just got the the comment portions which are extensively long. But I do plan on getting that done after I get the fiscal management plan done. So you're high on the priority list.
Just as a background to for the rest of council, the summer report that came out on the twenty forty survey was nice. Quite a few people I've chatted with, they they either didn't see their comments in there or we will keep our other information and I know MACOG collected all the information. And it just makes sense for future engagement for the community that that there's access. So again, I just have a respect for the clock running down. Either offer to help, but I don't, I really don't, we don't want that to get lost.
Yeah, no, it it has to be published for the comp plan anyway. So the only thing I don't have right now are the postcard comments, but I have the survey comments. And there's probably more in that than there are in the postcards anyway. But I meet with them Thursday, so I'm going to request to get some sort of breakdown of the postcard comments as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other citizen, but anyone online?
Don't see anyone unmuting.
This time council issues action items, Rich.
I don't know if anything, and maybe just a question as far as our next council meeting and because it involves a public hearing on the Tamarack Road. We anticipate a large group for that. Do we want to perhaps do it at Beach Lodge and we started five instead of six, but question in terms of logistics on that meeting.
Um, I don't know what to anticipate. The that particular project did go before B Z A. When they got their special use variance, there were there were, there was public input, probably maybe eight or ten people. I I don't know, though. I don't think it's a bad idea ever. I mean, we have this many people for a normal council meeting. It might not hurt to have a bigger venue whenever we do a public hearing. That's up to you guys. The notice published already.
It was.
Yeah, and it probably has town council, town hall. And I will have a regular time, so.
Okay. I just want to thank Bill Githens for his leadership the last two years. Sally?
I have no input at this time.
Bill?
I have nothing.
Bill?
Uh, yeah, I have something. As you know, this is a month that you need to declare whether you're going to be running for town council. And I have decided I'm not going to run again. I didn't run in the first place because I got appointed. But so anyway, it the reasons are are personal. We we want to get back to traveling internationally, my wife and I, and it doesn't really afford much time to do that because it would be extended trips. And we're also probably going to be doing a lot of domestic travel as well. So as you get older, there's you kind of say, oh, there's going to be a point where I can't travel anymore. So I want to get a jump on that and till now it really was okay because of COVID and the pandemic, but now that's starting to cool down. We would like to continue with our travel adventures.
Travel, town council.
Well, town council, this is a lot cheaper. But I but I have a lot of miles from my international travel in for McDonald's, so I want to spend those.
Well, Bill, you will stay on this year.
I will stay through the term. But I wanted to let you know because I know that you're going to have to recruit someone to run. And I think you're the president of the of the Republican. I don't know what call it.
Present, Jim.
Present, Charlie.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your service and I I respect your wishes.
Thank you. I I've enjoyed it. I've learned a lot and it's quite different than corporate.
Yeah.
No kidding.
Okay, is there a motion to turn the claim?
Some of
second, move second, all for everything by by saying aye.
Aye.
Is that Phil Giffen's on the first?
Yes.